Good morning. The time is now 9:41 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of February 14, 2023 is called to order. I would like to begin, please, with a moment of silence for the victims of the tragedy at Michigan State University. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. I would like to add under Section 11J, state and federal legislative update, a statement of support for repeal of the required retention of third-grade students from MCL 380.1280F.
Very good. We have a motion. Do we have a sec? We have a motion from Dr. Pritchett, support from Mr. McMillan. Dr. Pritchett, if you would be kind enough to read your statement into the record, please.
Sure. MCL 380.1280F states that any third-grade student who receives a reading score that is less than one grade level behind as determined by the Michigan Department of Education based on the Grade III English Language Arts Mstep assessment will have their parent guardian notified by June 1 of that same year that the student will be retained in third grade for the next year. While there are some so-called good cause exemptions to this retention section of the law, the Michigan State Board of Education has consistently supported elimination of this regressive portion of statute since its enactment in 2016. It must be reiterated that the Michigan State Board of Education has always supported and continues to support the literacy interventions that are required in the statute. The State Board of Education therefore recommends and encourages the members of the Michigan Legislature to repeal the required retention portion of the law and retain the requirements for evidence-based literacy interventions and instruction to be provided to students, especially those who require additional instruction and literacy based on multiple assessments.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion for putting this on the agenda? Hearing none. We could have a roll call vote, please. Ms. Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Any other additions or deletions from the agenda? Dr. Pugh.
Yes, I would, I move to put the Board of Education's resolution on sex education on the agenda.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a motion by President Pugh, a second by Mr. Bullock. Dr. Pugh, would you like to read that into the record, please?
Sure. Whereas the Michigan Department of Education has issued a memorandum dated February 2, 2023 to provide guidance and clarity surrounding the issue of sex education, whereas the Department of Education referring to state law on the issue of sex education invokes MCL 380-1506, MCL 380-1507, MCL 380-1507B, MCL 3881766A. Whereas these compiled laws define the legal responsibilities and obligations of school districts and educational entities as related to the scope and delivery of sex education to students, whereas these laws include requirements that a district provide notification to parents prior to offering sex education classes and establish a process to allow parents and legal guardians to excuse their children from sex education classes without penalty, whereas school districts have established transparent and standardized processes to opt out of sex education classes, including by making standard opt-out forms available to parents and legal guardians. Whereas the Department of Education affirms that sex education includes family planning, reproductive health, and the prevention and treatment of sexually transmitted diseases, whereas the Board of Education applauds all education that can empower young people with information, including factual and evidence-based information that can enable them to determine when they start their families, prevent pregnancies, minimize sickness, and enjoy good health and wellness. Whereas the Board of Education further applauds school districts and the Department of Education for striving to ensure that sex education curricula conform to developmentally appropriate instruction. Whereas while the decisions of parents or legal guardians to remove the decisions of parents or legal guardians to remove their child from sex education classes must be respected, the established processes of school districts for opting out of classes must also be preserved for consistency, continuity, and accountability solely through the use of a district's legally drafted and legally finding forms. Whereas any deviation from a district's standard and established procedures for opting out of approved classes may disrupt the school, its operations, and the education of its students. Therefore, be it resolved that the Michigan Board of Education concurs with the findings of the Department of Education on the teaching of sex education. Therefore, be it resolved, further resolved, that the Michigan State Board of Education encourages school districts to offer standard opt-out forms that are consistent across the district to promote continuity, accountability, efficiency, and transparency. And be it further resolved that the State Board of Education recommends school districts to reject any third-party opt-out forms as invalid, irrelevant, and inconsequential.
We have a motion to put a resolution on the agenda. We have a second. Is there any discussion associated, not with the merits of the resolution, but rather with placing it on the agenda? Ms. McMillan.
I don't understand why this would need to be made. I would think that it's clear that some local opt-out forms may be insufficient, may be incorrect. I don't think this board would want somebody to use an incorrect or insufficient form. I don't think any, it seems like as long as an opt-out is legal. The parent, you know, there, people have different family values, different family circumstances. There may be some that, I mean, we don't need to treat everybody exactly the same when it comes to something like an opt-out. I think it's, we support, you know, opting out of tests, national test.
Vote is on placing it on the agenda?
I just don't think that this is a, I'm talking about why we shouldn't have it on the agenda.
Fair enough.
I don't think that it's necessary. I think it's harmful. And I think it goes, once again, against parental rights for government schools to decide what parents are allowed to do and not do with their children. So I certainly don't think that this should be on the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Ms. Snyder.
Thank you. There already is a legal process in place with an AG opinion that backs up that legal process for sex education opt-out. So I'll be voting no. To develop a new process via a bureaucratic resolution is not the next best thing to do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Dr. Pugh.
Again, this, we want to put this on the agenda to have the discussion, voted up or down, and have the conversation as to the necessity of the item. But definitely want to give parents an opportunity who definitely agree that there is a process in place, making sure that this is raised, that there is a process that is in place, especially in light of the fact that there is a lot of confusion. And there is, and I think it's a purposeful confusion. And so it needs to be known that there are, that as the Michigan Department of Education has definitely put guidance out, we just want to back that guidance up, just as we do with all of our other resolutions. We speak to the Legislature. We speak in support of the Legislature and the Governor. And this is, I mean, to the AG's opinion, this could support that as well.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Any other discussion for placing this resolution on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none. Ms. Cook, a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh? Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Any other items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Ms. Snyder.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda to add a hate has no safe harbor resolution in discussion action item after J following judgies.
Very good. So we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? We have a motion by Ms. Snyder, support by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion to you, Ms. Snyder, to read it into the record, please?
Yes, I'll read the resolution, but I do want to acknowledge the children in this room. This is heartbreaking that we would need to discuss this in front of you.
If you would, if you would prefer not to read the resolution?
I would prefer to read it.
Very good.
After I acknowledge the children in the room.
Okay.
The State Board of Education has a sincere duty to stand against extremism and give hate no safe harbor. The Michigan Department of Education is currently allocating dollars to local school districts for diversity, equity, and inclusion programming through financial incentivization by grants administered by the U.S. Department of Education. Recently, Michigan was thrust into the national spotlight by a local racial equity consultant and chair of the City of Jackson's Racial Equity Commission and board member of Jackson Public School District. Whereas the vitriol this elected official spewed in her community included, but unfortunately was not limited to the following hateful rhetoric: Whiteness is so evil. White supremacy exists because of white women. These white women are the, in capital letters, stupidest. Whereas basic tenants of DEI terms like teaching children supposedly to be anti-racist based on supremacy being a racial quality and not a human one are not achieving diversity, equity, or inclusion, rather encouraging division through creating a culture that is not for one another. Whereas this targeted contempt towards any one group as a way of thinking, speaking, and doing is an unsafe system for all students, as evidenced by a local JPS parent's public comment. Quote, "Her racist comments should not be condoned." How can all kids feel safe when physical characteristics over which they have no control are being called evil and dangerous? Whereas DEI dollars are not achieving meaningful results to bring about racial equality and are instead emboldening leaders who perpetuate contempt in an environment that is increasingly difficult for students to equally access an opportunity to an education. Therefore, be it resolved in the spirit of equality and restoring trust and the safety of all public school students. The State Board of Education declares that this kind of extremism and hate has no safe harbor in the state of Michigan. Further, we recommend the following measures. The Michigan Department of Education should stop administering dollars to local school districts for DEI coordinators where efforts are rooted in this divisive way of thinking, speaking, and doing. The districts shouldn't be using taxpayer dollars to perpetuate hate through programs that pretend to stop it. That elected officials take an oath to honor the Constitution, which states all students in the state of Michigan have equal access to public education without discrimination. Finally, we urge the very leaders of school districts to exemplify what this is, what it looks like and sounds like. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. We have a motion. We have a second. We've read the motion into the, into the minutes, if you will. Any discussion associated with placing this item on the agenda? Any, looking, looking. Dr. Pugh.
I'll be voting down the placement of this item on the agenda. This is February. It's Black History Month. And to me, this is just a bold attempt at a perpetual, larger agenda to define diversity, equity, and inclusion. It doesn't matter how politely it's read, how nice the words are. This is, it just is what it is. And no one individual's words, you know, whether they're out of context or in context, that cannot be considered for policy at this table. Otherwise, there's plenty we could bring to this table. And I'll just say, you know, we're not going to be Florida in Michigan.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Any other reflections on placing this item on the agenda? Going once and twice. Just a point of clarification, Ms. Snyder. Your resolution notes the Michigan Department of Education should stop administering dollars to local school districts for DEI coordinators. What dollars are those?
Through the Federal Department of Education. I can send you an exhaustive list of them.
I'd just like to know what the funding source is.
I'd be happy to follow up in email.
Okay. All right. So you don't know at this point?
I do.
Okay. Could you share that for us?
I will follow up in email so that it's in writing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Board members, we have a motion on the table. Mr. Bullock.
Please follow up. All of the members.
Will do. The U.S. Department of Education has an entire website devoted to the grant dollars that they send to our education department and that flow through you to coordinators like this JPS. Local school board member who used these words, who is responsible for leading children that are in this room, children like the children that are in this room. This is the culture that we're cultivating, and yet we cannot have the discussion at this table.
We have a motion on the table. We have a second. We've had discussion. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Cook, a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Negative. No.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Tilly?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you very much. We have a, we have an agenda amended with two additions. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Moved by Dr. Pritchett, seconded by Dr. Robinson. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Cook, a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. At this time, Ms. Jennifer Cook, who is sitting in for Liz Evans today, will introduce the State Board of Education. Jen, please do the honors.
Thank you. Good morning. You have been listening to Dr. Michael Rice, State Board Chairman and State Superintendent. To the left around the table is Board President Dr. Pamela Pugh from Saginaw. Board Co-Vice President, Ms. Ellen Cogan Lipton from Huntington Woods. NASB Delegate, Dr. Mitchell Robinson from Ockamas, and Ms. Nikki Snyder from Dexter. And seated behind them is Board Co-Vice President, Ms. Tilly, Tiffany Tilly from West Bloomfield. And then back to the table to my right is Mr. Tom McMillan from Oakland Township. Board Treasurer, Mr. Marshall Bullock from Detroit. And Board Secretary, Dr. Judith Pritchett from Washington Township. And virtually, we have Ms. Stephanie O'Day, the Governor's K-12 Policy Advisor.
Thank you very much. The public may register to provide comment during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 1:00 p.m. Those wishing to make public comment must register before 1:00 p.m. today. To provide public comment by telephone, please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage, www.michigan.gov/MDE. To provide public comment in person, please complete a public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. These instructions are listed on the MDE webpage at www.michigan.gov/MDE. We are at the point of the agenda that I have looked forward to for a week. As noted a moment ago by Ms. Cook, Ms. Nanette Hansen is the 2022-2023 Michigan Teacher of the Year, first-grade teacher at Lemmer Elementary School in Escanaba area public schools. Ms. Hansen is joined by Ms. Ashley Lor, Region 6 Teacher of the Year from Delta Center Elementary School and the Grand Ledge Public Schools, and five of the cutest young people you will ever see in your life. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Welcome, Ms. Lor, Ms. Hansen, and virtually, Ms. Robel, and our Grand Ledge students.
Thank you so much for having us here today. I'm so excited to talk with you. Just a couple of things about me to give you a little bit of background. I am the current beginner garden through 4th grade elementary music educator at Delta Center Elementary and Grand Ledge Public Schools. I double majored in my undergrad with both a music degree and an English degree. So I'm certified K-12 music, 612 English at Central Michigan University. I have, fire up chips. I have a Master's of Music in Music Education that I received from the University of Michigan. And I am also the Education and Outreach Coordinator for the Lansing Symphony Orchestra, facilitating programs for greater Lansing area students, thousands of them across our mid-Michigan area. I'm also an adjunct professor at Anderson University in Indiana, where I teach a course that is based on a book that I also wrote called The Music Educator's Guide to Grant Writing. I'm a national presenter, consultant, and collaborator. Carnegie Hall has had me present on their behalf six times, including once in New York City, which was an absolute thrill before the pandemic. I've secured over $1 million in educated-related funding since 2013, either for myself personally, for educational programs, or for others across our state and nation. I'm a published author on grant writing and recorder pedagogy. I have a third book on the way this year. I'm the current treasurer of the Michigan Music Education Association, which is one of the premier educational organizations for music educators in our state. I'm also the treasurer for our local Grand Ledge Education Association. I serve on a finance committee for the International Orfshillwork Forum Salzburg, which is a group that spans literally around the world, helping people become better music educators. I am the recipient of a few awards, including the Paul Bluit Friend of Education Award through the Michigan Education Association. And I'm very excited to study in Salzburg, Austria this summer, thanks to a grant where I will be learning just so much more about music education and also attending a conference while I'm there, too. I'm excited to return. So that's a little bit about myself personally when it comes to my professional life. Personally, I have a husband. His name is Travis. We love to explore. And if you look really closely at the ostrich that's right above my head, he stole my sunglasses. That was, that was quite a shock. I have two dogs, one of which, the one at the top, is a certified therapy dog who I have taken to facilities. I have two cats as well. I love to be outdoors. I'm a master angler, and you can see that fish. It's a 35-inch lake trout that I caught in Lake Superior. I will not tell you where that happened. And again, love to travel. I went on the trip of a lifetime this past summer with my mother, who is a retired public school educator in the back from Ockamas Public Schools, as well as a colleague who's a 5th grade educator at a former school district, and spent six weeks in Europe exploring. And I learned so much that it's just been so amazing to be able to bring back and make this, this world more real to my students because of these travels. And finally, I am a third-generation educator. But I'm here to talk with you about elementary arts in our Michigan schools. And I'm just, I am so excited to talk with you about this. I do have some more information on my personal website. I've provided the link there. It's ashleylor.com/arts if you would like to find some more information, just a few additional articles and a survey that I recently did. But essentially, when it comes to defining elementary arts in Michigan, when I'm talking about elementary arts, I'm including the visual arts, music, dance, and theater. These four fine arts are contained within the same document for standards and benchmarks in our state. However, we do not have an endorsement in Michigan for either dance or theater education. We do have it being taught in schools. But if someone is teaching it, they are not necessarily certified in it from within our public school system. They've received that certification potentially elsewhere. These standards that we have cover each grade K through 12 with kind of an overarching theme for the high school level 9 through 12. Across the state, there are massive inequities in how visual arts, music, dance, and theater education is included or not included in district offerings. And I recently threw out an independent survey completely of my own. It was not scientific. It was not approved by any boards, but just, I asked people. I asked people, what are you doing in your school? Because we've had a lot of change over the past few years because of the pandemic. Schools have changed how they are offering programs to students. And I was curious, what are you doing right now? So if you would like more information on that, I do have hard copies with me. I also have it available on my website. But essentially, what I learned, which was honestly not too much of a surprise, was schools fall within really about three categories. A lot of schools have weekly or rotation-based arts offerings that are taught by endorsed arts specialists. My school, for example, is one of them. And when I say rotation-based, I mean that kids are possibly on an A, B, C schedule. So Monday would be an A day, Tuesday B, Wednesday C. Thursday would be back to A again. That's what rotation-based typically means. And some schools do have weekly, or twice weekly, or even some on up to five times a week. They're in a special class or receive the same special class during, during that week. Some of these weekly or rotation-based arts offerings are taught by non-arts endorsed instructors in elementary. At my level, if you are certified in general education, you can be a music teacher. I am certified K-12 music, but for eight years of my career, I also taught computer science, which was very eye-opening. The first time I sat down with kindergartners and I said, here's a laptop, here's a mouse, and they picked it up and they turned it around. And, you know, they didn't, at the time, you know, didn't know where to click and that sort of thing. So I learned a lot doing that. And then the third offering that we have does not include really arts offerings at all. They're not on really a tight schedule. They have irregular offerings that are often limited to special events, such as field trips, guest artists, assemblies, that sort of thing. And that is a little bit more rare based on who I gathered information from, but that is a reality in our state. It is my opinion and the opinion of many others that the arts affect cognitive development and overall brain development big time. And I do have a few quotes that you can read on your own. But essentially, music, visual arts, dance, theater, all of these things, there's evidence that these different trainings give students the ability to become better learners and better aware of the world in which we live and be able to work together and communicate better together. And one of these quotes says, "Converging evidence has demonstrated that musical training is associated with improved perceptual and cognitive skills, including executive functions and general intelligence, particularly in childhood," which is a place where these specials in fine arts really, really need to be across our state, in my opinion. And so just a few other examples of what is going on in our state. Because I've talked with people, I serve on a few different boards and in different areas where I'm communicating with educators. And I've also visited schools over the course of my 12 years of teaching. And some things that I see, and that I see so much that are happening, include formative assessments and summative assessments. They're happening both from the instructor's side of things, but also students have a say in some of these things, and it has helped to shape their learning in positive ways. Music, speaking from music, and art, too, are often used as a cross-curricular teaching device. For example, the ABC song. How many of us know that song? And that's learning the alphabet. And we very often rely on that song to get through the alphabet. Try thinking about it without the song attached, the melody. It's a little different. Many teachers often implement a color-by-number sort of thing within their teaching. There are these things that schools are doing right now called brain breaks, where students are literally getting up and dancing and moving. That way, they can sit for another hour or so to continue their learning in that capacity. We, as arts educators, intentionally implement and highlight the various subjects in our teaching. When it comes to math, we talk about division. We very much, in the music classroom, we talk about repetition, pattern recognition. We discuss history. And within those elements of history, we talk about the development of song, of culture, and of a better worldview. When it comes to science, we talk about the vibrations of how sound is made and how music is made or interpreted. When it comes to English, we talk syllables, phrasing, language structure or syntax, reading. We do all of these things, and we give children different experiences within these realms and creative ways for them to gather this information. Recently, as part of the Teacher of the Year program, I sat.
I got this on the.
Whoa, excuse me. I sat, thanks, Siri. Got to pipe in. We sat in on an hour-long presentation on computational thinking, which is a little bit of a buzzword right now, and we're hearing a little bit more about. And there are really these four main aspects of computational thinking, including decomposition, which is basically breaking down into more manageable parts; the pattern recognition, which is same versus different; abstraction, pulling most relevant parts and utilizing them to help solve problems; and then that algorithmic thinking, which is defining a step-by-step solution to a problem. And I was sitting there thinking. And I was sitting there thinking, oh, my gosh, this is what music educators, what arts educators have been doing for decades. We do this. When it comes to decomposition, we talk about breaking down parts to figure out the sum of the music that we are learning, such as form or structure. In pattern recognition, same different phrases constantly, and melodies, trying to figure out where they are and what they're doing.
I really--
Oh, my goodness. When it comes to abstraction, filtering out harmonies to focus on a melody or working together to decide what instrument part might be most important at the time or should be prominent at a given time, we do this every day. And algorithm design, process of how we learn a new piece of music and experiment with different ways of expression, such as adding movement, instruments, improvisatory concepts, speech patterns, et cetera. We also have social-emotional learning within our classrooms, another buzz-worthy thing right now. Acquiring and applying knowledge, skills, and attitudes develop a healthy identity. Managing motions, maintain positive relationships. Think about how important this is, given what's been happening in the past 12 hours. The ability to practice making responsible and caring decisions. We do this. And within my classroom, I teach my students intrinsic value, leading to positive self-esteem that is not based on extrinsic rewards, such as stickers or other objects. In our fine arts classrooms across the state, we are working together as a team to create things, make mistakes and discoveries, and learn how each person's contribution is essential to an ensemble's success. Every voice and every choice matters, no matter how big or small. The arts are education, and this is something that's going across the nation as just an imperative part of what our schools need to do. And it is imperative that all students have access to an equitable delivery of arts education. And you can read more about that later. But arts education is key to unlocking the potential in our students. And Nanette has a little bit to say.
I'm Nanette today.
She's Nanette today.
Ms. Hanson is in California, Santa Clara. She's on her way to the Google building with all the other State Teachers of the Year this week. So that's why she's not here. So this slide is talking about Lemur Elementary School in Escanaba. And she says that she's fortunate to have such a skilled, creative, caring, and dedicated teacher who puts students first. Mrs. Beth Peterson has been creating inspirational murals, as you see there. And I have seen those. Dr. Rice has seen those as well in the hallways when we made the announcement. She's encouraged opportunities for discussion about the Leader in Me program. And this program helps to give students the social and emotional tools they need to build leadership and life skills. While she was the creative genius behind these works of art, it took a team effort from the teachers and staff to bring these projects to life. She's provided opportunities for our staff, building relationships, which encourages and paves the way for positive staff morale. This is her music. One of her music teachers in Escanaba. And his name is Mr. Lauren Watson. And Lauren has worked hard to make sure that students are focused, mindful, and ready to learn when they come to music. Lauren has worked over the years to engage students in his music classes. He researches best practices and finds out where his students are to meet them at the door and leads them in basic stretches and breathing exercises to calm and focus their minds. Lauren also learned some mindfulness techniques and picked up a little poem he calls the Power Poem. It is self-reaffirming and becomes the class motto. I am loved. May I be safe. May I be healthy. May I be happy. May I be peaceful.
This is an image that's going around a lot on social media. And I saw it, and I immediately thought about the fine arts and really overall specials offerings across our state. And I truly feel that we're really at the first part where there are disparities. Across our state, we have a disproportional amount of time when students are in fine arts or specials programs. And I really implore you, as a board, to consider what we can do to get to the other side of things, to help increase access, to help our students, and to help the humanity in our future. Now, I could talk about this all day. And it's a good thing they gave me only a few minutes to speak with you today. But I did bring some students with me who have some things to share with you from their perspective when it comes to specials overall. And I did ask them to speak about their specials opportunities that we have at our school. We have physical education, visual art, music, and library. So you're going to hear them touch on all the things. And I also told them, there are other schools that don't have what you have. And you'll hear what a couple of them feel about that. This is completely on their own. So-- Xavier, gear up, my friend. Tying a shoe. Ready to go. Welcome to my world. Come on up.
Come right up here, buddy. Go slow.
My name is Xavier Weiss, and I am in fourth grade. Specials are important for kids to have fun at school. I think gym is good to give you a break and get into physical activity and move around so we have fun. Gym is important. Library is important for kids to learn and read. You can also pick books that you like. Also, people that don't have money can still get and read books. And that's why I think library is important to have. Music is a good skill to learn, and it's enjoyable. When I first learned how to play recorder, I had a lot of fun. Now I can play recorder so good, and I'm learning how to play. I'm having a lot of fun, and I'm pretty good at it. Music is a blast and a good way to calm down and just focus. If you're not the best at it, just practice and have a good time. And that's why music is important. Art is a good time for kids to use their imagination. I love to sit at the table with my friends and do my work.
Say that one. Introduce yourself. My name is--
My name is Xavier Weiss.
And you are in?
I'm in fourth grade.
Thank you, Xavier. Excellent job. You're done. Nice and loud, my dear. Introduce yourself. My name?
My name is Jessa Venken. I am in second grade. Art will help you be creative and good at drawing. Gym will help you get stronger muscles to carry heavy things. Music can help you have a beautiful voice when you grow up. Library can help you read new books and cool books.
My name is Sammy Lutz, and I'm in fourth grade. I think that music, art, library, and gym are all an important part of a day. It's good to help add creativity to kids' days and for them to express their personalities to the world and their friends. It's an important break to get out energy and behave better in class. It's really important to have that break. So if you're out there and speak up, this is really important.
Nice and loud.
I love specials so-- My name is Janice Silver, and I'm in second grade. I love specials so much. I really like library because there are so many books. I really like gym because it makes exercise fun. I really like music because there are so many sounds. I love art because I think it's where creativity comes from. That's why I love specials.
Love.
My name is Grace Quagliata, and I'm in fourth grade. The first reason why specials are important is that lots of kids look forward to them every day. The second reason is that music might be hard for some people, but once you get the hang of it, it's so fun. Some kids think gym is all about exercise, but it's really not. It can unlock new hobbies that you never thought you would like. One time, I had to play volleyball, and I thought that it would be boring. But then I found out I was really good at serving the ball. Art is my favorite special because when you focus hard and think that your work is amazing, then you can look back and say, wow, I really made that. And now I start doing my own projects at home. I think every kid should get to do specials because they deserve a chance to do them. Because what if they want to be an artist or learn how to play an instrument? Or they just want to do it for fun? So that's why every kid should get to do specials.
The only prompt that I gave them was, why? Why are specials important to you? Why? They get it. And this is just a small sampling. I actually have more for you, but I couldn't bring half of my school with me. I would have loved to. Thank you so much for listening today, and we've got just one more thing.
And then you have gifts.
I do have some gifts as well.
So I'll do a quick MTOY update for Ms. Hanson. She went to Regent Seven, Dustin Sayers School Craft Middle School in School Craft. And she was impressed with the amount of effort Dustin put into checking in with his classes at the start of each period, mental health check, daily check, wellness check. And the kids look forward to sharing with him as a group. Also, she met with the special education teachers at School Craft. And she was beyond blown away with how their Common Bond program worked. And then also, she went to Swan Bailey High School to look at Don Prez's CTE program. And she also met with the special ed teacher at two elementary schools so they could talk with their administrators and staff about special ed needs. Don has built a great CTE program, and especially with all the many awards that she's won, including her Business Professionals of America students. So do you want to explain that?
What you are receiving are Valentine's cards across the board when it comes to age level. And these were created in a certified art teacher's classroom, where students in our school receive art once or twice a week for a total of 70 minutes. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Low. Board members, any comments or questions of Ms. Low?
I'm going to jump in first because this is my world. Personally speaking, you are preaching to the choir for me. What can we do, Ashley? What can the board do? What can the Department of Education do? What can the legislature do to make things more equitable across the state?
I think when it comes to equitability, the first thing you need to do is examine what is really happening. My independent survey should not be the only thing out there right now. And because of the pandemic, we've had so many changes in the way specials and fine arts have been used lately. And I found that just in basic responses on my survey and from talking with people. So I think finding out what's happening now, using that data to then make some potential changes in our state would be wonderful. I think it would just be stellar, personally, if these things were required and taught by certified educators. I recognize that that is a big ask as well. But I think examining where we're at, knowing where we're going, then will be a little bit easier.
I'll just pony on one thing. I don't think it's that big an ask. I think every kid deserves this. And right now, we are one of six states that does not do it. So it can't be that big an ask if 44 states in the United States are already requiring elementary art and music. So I think it's actually a pretty small ask, and the least we can do for those kids-- Who, by the way, that, your writing and thinking is remarkable, you five. So if we could just give them what they need and then get out of the way, I think things would get a lot better. So I don't think it's a big ask. I think it's a small ask, and it's a reasonable ask.
I agree.
Dr. Robinson, anything more?
I just--
Yeah, I was going to say, just another outstanding job to you and the young people. They, public speaking is hard, and they came up here with enthusiasm and articulated themselves from the second to the fourth grade, which is better than some adults. And so I just wanted to give them a hand again and say that they did a great job. And so representation of what you are teaching was on display.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you and thank each of you. On a day like today, we really needed this, so I appreciate it, appreciate it, as well as the message that we hear loud and clear. And we heard you also, Dr. Robinson.
Please.
I just want to say thank you to the young people for coming and joining us at the meeting. You guys are so well behaved, sitting so still and quiet. And I know sometimes that could be hard in meetings, but you're doing a great job. And thank you so much for the card and the art. You all did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Ms. Lor, thank you for your presentation. Grand Ledge students, you rocked it out.
Let me just add that, you know, somebody like Young Zhao, I don't know if you've ever heard of him, but he, and I agree with much of what he says, particularly in this area, where, you know, I think with computers and AI, they're all-- I mean, I'm a CPA. They say that a lot of computers are going to take over our jobs, engineering. But it's the arts that computers, even I've seen computer-generated art, and it's nothing like human art. And I think that's something that, you know, computers and music, they can try. But I think it's the beauty of what humans can do that is not going to be replicated by computers. So I think this is something that is critical. And I think a lot of the, you know, requirements, the high-stakes testing really crowds out the arts and makes it so that if it's not on a test, they don't really, it's not that high of a priority. So I really think one of the ways to do this is to really reduce all the requirements and allow locals to really be free to decide what is important in their areas. And so I think arts would rise to the top. Thank you.
Ms. Lor, again, thank you very much. Grand Ledge students, congratulations. You did a terrific job. I'd say take the rest of the day off without, with pay, but that's not going to happen. Back to school we go. And Ms. Lor, lest there be any doubt, I agree with you. Our kids deserve elementary art, music, and PE without question. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Board, the next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is a presentation on the proposed standards for the preparation of middle school and high school social studies. During this presentation, we will share a proposal for the revision and ultimate adoption of new standards for the preparation of middle grades, grades five through nine, and high school, grades seven through 12, social studies teachers. These standards would replace Michigan's current preparation standards for teachers in the areas of social studies, history, economics, geography, and political science. Following a period of public comment, the board will be asked to approve the standard for the preparation of middle school and high school social studies teachers during its May 9, 2023 meeting. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent of the Division of Educators, Student, and School Supports, Dr. Sarah Kate Levann, Interim Director of the Office of Educator Excellence, and Ms. Darcy McMahon, Higher Education Consultant. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Weiss, and good morning, board. Joining me today, as Dr. Weiss has shared, is Dr. Sarah Kate Levann, our interim director for the Office of Educator Excellence. And our higher education consultant, Darcy McMahon, will be leading us in this presentation today. Before Ms. McMahon starts, Dr. Levann, do you have anything to kick us off before we move into the presentation?
I do, thank you. And thank you. That is really hard to follow. I just want to say, our presentation is a little bit less exciting. This set of standards follows the math, the science, and ELI standards that you've already approved. It's also very closely aligned to the PK3 and 3.6 standards that were also approved by the board. Just to really quickly outline, the main purpose of this set of standards is to prepare teachers to explore evidence, to draw their own conclusions across the disciplines of social studies, and also to develop habits of mind within the fields of social studies. So those are the two main purposes of this set of standards. And now I'm going to turn it to Darcy so she can take you through the standards and walk you through the changes for this set of standards.
Thank you, Dr. Levann. Good day, and thank you for including this work on the agenda today. Those, as Dr. Levann mentioned, those fabulous young scholars and fantastic teacher are going to be a tough act to follow. But we are here today to share with you the proposed revised standards for preparing teachers for middle grades and high school social studies. As you can see on the slide, there are many reasons why social studies teacher preparation standards were determined to be the next critical step in our revision process. This work is part of an ongoing process that began with revision of the certification structure into grade bands. Important MDE initiatives, such as understanding and meeting the needs of the whole child, integration of disciplinary literacy, a focus on comprehensive history instruction and on equity, also drive a need to revise these standards in line with these initiatives and goals. Finally, the current standards are almost 20 years old, and Michigan K-12 social studies standards and the National Council Social Studies Teacher Preparation standards have both been updated in that 20-year window. And of course, these standards are important because all students deserve-- And of course, these standards are important because all students deserve social studies teachers prepared with up-to-date standards. This work is in support of Goal 7 of the Michigan Strategic Education Plan to increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. These standards will impact the preparation of education students, teacher candidates, and middle grades and high school students will continue to have well-prepared social studies teachers. With these new standards, every middle grades and high school social studies candidate will earn a social studies endorsement, which prepares them to teach all social studies courses at that grade band. They may also add an optional endorsement for extra depth of preparation in one or more sub-disciplines. A committee of stakeholders developed a structure for social studies endorsements based on consideration of the certification structure, committee recommendations, alignment with MDE initiatives and goals, and reviewing input from across the state. Multiple perspectives were represented within the Social Studies Teachers Preparation Standards Stakeholder Committee by the 60 stakeholders and reviewers who directly contributed, representing social studies curriculum and instructional leaders, professional education organizations, including the Michigan Council for the Social Studies, Michigan Council for History Education, Geographic Alliance, and the Michigan Center for Civic Education. Educator preparation faculty, middle grades and high school teachers, multiple geographic regions, including the Upper Peninsula, public charter and private districts and institutions, state and national leaders in social studies education, such as Michigan Social Studies Supervisors Association, the Interfaith Religious Council of Metropolitan Detroit, and the Confederation of Michigan Tribal Education Directors. On this map, several committee members are often shown from a nearby locale. This is noted by the star regions and can be seen in this expanded view. As we zoom in on southeast Michigan, for example, you can see much more clearly how many stakeholders are clustered in the starred regions. After review of the current teacher preparation standards, current national standards, and current Michigan K-12 social studies standards, the committee unanimously decided to develop new standards for Michigan preparation in social studies that would align with the National Council for the Social Studies Preparation Standards, Michigan's K-12 social studies standards, and MDE initiatives. The stakeholders deemed current Michigan teacher preparation standards insufficient, and so opted for drafting new standards incorporating key ideas from multiple sources. Stakeholders were convened in the fall of 2020 and began review of standards documents and MDE goals and initiatives. The stakeholder group began by drafting a framework for the standards for all of the endorsements, and this was completed by May of '21. The committee met roughly twice monthly through April of 2022, meeting virtually throughout the pandemic. Most stakeholders were part of multiple writing teams, including a steering team and some sub-disciplinary content teams. Some of the key milestones of the process are highlighted on the slide. Draft standards were completed during the spring of 2022 and then shared with external reviewers around the state for feedback. This feedback was incorporated and resulted in the proposed standards you have in front of you today. The stakeholder committee worked to ensure that the proposed middle grades and high school social studies teacher preparation standards have a student's first framing, which means that K-12 student needs were prioritized over adult needs or programmatic needs in developing these standards. As a result of this, the proposed standards prepare social studies teachers to meet the needs of the whole child, represent a student-centered paradigm for instruction, and enable candidates to connect social studies learning to student experiences, interests, and identity. The committee was intentional to ensure multiple perspectives of the content were embedded throughout to work toward objective and unbiased treatment of topics. A primary intention of social studies instruction is to help ensure that students have all the tools, skills, and capacities and dispositions to engage as active citizens in our representative democracy. The committee worked to keep a tight focus on this primary purpose. These standards are equity-focused, ensuring access to quality social studies instruction and opportunity, and promoting equitable participation for all learners. Finally, these standards are written as action-based, performance-based, performance objectives as a result of intentional integration of the MDE core teaching practices and social studies inquiry practices. And this means that candidates must apply knowledge and skill in context. The committee's steering team worked to develop a framework that was aligned with the Michigan K-12 social studies standards and the NCSS C3 framework, teacher preparation standards, and also focused on ensuring those previous objectives were met. The alignment of the NCSS and K-12 standards can be seen in each of the wedges around the wheel, while the focus on key objectives became the hub of the wheel and the framework noted, and the hub of the framework as noted as the guiding principles. The committee also identified three cross-cutting themes which were critical to include. These aspects of the framework became the foundational building blocks to develop the performance objectives that became the draft standards you have here today. As mentioned, the guiding principles are at the heart of the framework for these standards. These three aspects come from the initial objectives, and stakeholders were mindful of these in development of all the standards across the domains. Inquiry refers to the methods by which social scientists, such as historians, geographers, and economists, do their work. These processes are embedded throughout the standards, ensuring that candidates have inquiry experiences themselves and develop skills to engage students in social studies inquiry as well. As mentioned earlier, citizenship and informed action is a primary goal of social studies instruction, and inclusion of multiple perspectives is critical to ensuring equitable and just student outcomes. These cross-cutting themes are woven across all of the domains of the standards. The core teaching practices are the skills good teachers have mastery of to be impactful on student learning. Disciplinary literacy and the practices of using reading, writing, speaking, and listening are critical to students' social studies understanding and are integrated across the standards, where logically fitting and to support learning. Wielding technology is critical for teachers to access materials and engage students in inquiry. The four domains of the draft standards, which are aligned with the National Council for Social Studies Teacher Preparation Standards and the C3 framework, include pedagogical, developmental, and content knowledge crucial for teachers to engage students in learning the Michigan K-12 social studies standards. These domains include professional dispositions and responsibilities, social studies learners and learning, planning and implementing instruction and assessments, and knowing and doing the social studies disciplines. Domain D is expanded further to encompass content understanding across civics, economics, geography, and history. These standards focus on deep, flexible, conceptual understanding that's needed by teachers to teach the content, with a goal of engaging teacher candidates in learning the content through engaging in social studies disciplinary practices and development of citizenship and informed action. As you can see, the sub-disciplines listed here are the same for both middle grades and high school. However, the content within these sub-disciplines is targeted to match the content that teachers at that grade band need to understand to teach social studies courses. Specifically, standard D2, applying disciplinary concepts and tools, is an expanded standard to include understanding of content in each of these four sub-disciplines of social studies. This ensures that all social studies candidates will be well-prepared to teach all of the required social studies courses at the middle grades or high school levels. These content standards dig much more deeply into the content understanding specified in the Michigan K-12 social study standards and describe what well-prepared beginners need to know and be able to do to engage students with the content. Each optional disciplinary specialization also has standards aligned to the NCSS C3 framework. These standards are intended to provide deeper inquiry experiences in one of the sub-disciplines so that this developed expertise can also inform their work as teachers across all the domains. The proposed standards are consistent in format and rigor across the social studies sub-areas and sub-discipline areas, and they maintain strong social studies content through alignment with the Michigan K-12 social studies standards. So as a result of alignment to the committee objectives and that developed framework, there are several key shifts found in these proposed standards. These shifts are very similar to other recent teacher preparation standards update states. They are practice-based, and that proposed standards integrate both social studies arc of inquiry practices and core teaching practices. They are equity and whole-child focused. They also infuse this equity culturally responsive practices and whole-child principles throughout. They encompass three critical aspects for preparing well-started beginning teachers: knowledge, including content, pedagogy, and of students; skills, including disciplinary inquiry skills and core teaching practices; and dispositions needed to form students into informed, active citizens of society. Specialized knowledge, content knowledge for teaching, is also directly aligned to the K-12 standards. This tight focus on the content needed for teaching helps ensured well-prepared beginning teachers and enables programs to narrow the content scope to allow for expedient program completion. Some expected programmatic impacts of this include more consistency in preparation for all social studies teachers and clear alignment of content and pedagogy to the Michigan K-12 social studies standards. After today's meeting, the proposed standards will be sent out for statewide review and public comment, which will close on March 10. The stakeholder committee will review and address public comment feedback and make any changes before we bring the standards back for your approval in May. Following that approval, we would then begin providing communications, support, and assistance for teacher preparation programs to introduce the standards and revise their programs accordingly. Thank you so much, and please contact us with any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, Dr. Levann, Ms. McMahon. Any questions or comments by board members? Stayed with the presentation. McMillan.
Thank you for the presentation. I've got a lot of, a lot of questions to go through. I know these go out for comment and then it comes back to the board for vote. I would assume that if, and I don't have any notions that my questions would delay the rolling out or putting it out for public comment, but I assume that if the board didn't want these to go out for public comment, they could just vote to not, you know, that they're insufficient or that changes need to be made before going out. I got several questions. So on page four, it talks about, and you know, I think these standards are, approving standards are one of the biggest things that we do on the state board. So I think that it, giving it some time is appropriate. In number D, kind of in the middle, the changing points of agreement and disagreement of experts regarding their interpretations of social studied questions and practices. What, what kind of changing points of agreement and disagreement? Can you give me a couple of examples of that would be?
Yeah, I think that there, I mean, there are several examples listed there under D of topics about which there would be agreement or disagreement, that we really hope teacher candidates have developed the disposition and the skills to, to look at this from multiple viewpoints and to see where there is agreement, where there is disagreement, to weigh the evidence, to make conclusions or claims based on the facts and the evidence from a wide variety of multiple perspectives and viewpoints. So I think that's what that's really getting at and how they interpret and how that applies to social studies content, that social studies question in the, in the standard, that's what that's talking about. How do we, how do we look at those topics that are in our curriculum in light of what's happening in the news or the democratic processes or the economic processes, current events to shed light on that?
I guess you may not have understood my question. So can you give me specific examples? I see these news media, democratic process. I know, I see the sub-numbers, one, two, three, and four, but can you give me some specific events or items where experts have changed their points of agreement or disagreement regarding the interpretation of social studies questions? Like, what, what does that mean? I mean, I see that there's nothing specific. Can you give me a couple of specifics, like where have experts changed their? I mean, quite frankly, to me, it sounds like it's kind of rewriting history, you know, where experts used to think one, or experts, in quotes, government experts usually, how they thought one thing and now they're, you know, throwing that down a memory hole and now we're going to rewrite history. Maybe it's not the case. I just, that's, that's the way that looks to me, changing points of agreement and disagreement of experts regarding their interpretations of social study questions. I'm just looking for a couple, I'm sure there's some that are rather innocuous. I just would like to hear a couple specifics.
Sure. The, the, the earth is flat. No, it's not. It's round.
Economic pressures would be another one. So where do economic pressures come from? What contributes to economic pressures? We've revised our thinking over time with more evidence or difference of opinion. Those would be innocuous. I agree about the flat earth, except that's probably not innocuous.
Right. And then so would they be, would the, would the new teachers be interested in making sure that it's clear that experts have been wrong in the past and that, you know, in science and history, whatever, and that?
I think perhaps that it's more considering that there have, there have always been multiple perspectives about a historical event or, you know, use of resources in geography. And it's in looking at all of those different perspectives and for consideration as opposed to trying to point out that it, these standards don't promote any one viewpoint or try to say that one viewpoint is right and one is wrong, but rather try to engage teacher candidates and have them engage their students in looking at, at the perspectives and coming to conclusions based on what they see, based on the facts and evidence there.
Moving on to page five, and I've asked this about other standards, and I've never really gotten a satisfactory answer. I know it looks good, but like in a 2A, kind of the, the heading of 2A, it talks about well-prepared beginning teachers will be able to explore the causes and potential solutions of current societal concerns and to provide equitable education for all social studies learners. What does, can you give me some example? What is equitable education and what would be inequ, what would be an example of inequitable education?
So an example of inequitable education would be something like I assign my students a project using resources, right, that requires evidence and resources. But I don't provide all of my students those same pieces of evidence or resources. I expect them to go home and get them or gather them when we know that some families don't have access to those resources. They can't access a library, or they don't have access to technology to search the internet. That would be inequ, inequitable.
Okay. So specifically just resources is what this is talking about?
No, it could be a number of things, but the thing that comes to my mind that often happens is that when we assign an assignment or a project, we don't make sure that everyone has the same access to resources. But there are other instances.
Okay. You require an assignment where a child is supposed to write about his, his ancestry, but he or she is adopted and doesn't know that ancestry, or isn't adopted but still doesn't know the ancestry, and you penalize the child for failure to do the project, notwithstanding the fact that the child is incapable of doing the project.
Another further example would be asking a- Another further example would be asking a, a student to write about an event such as a holiday, but the student doesn't celebrate that holiday.
Okay. Page six, you know, these new teachers are knowledgeable of at the very top D, the origins of the American governmental system, including the indigenous roots of democracy. What, what exactly are the indigenous roots of democracy?
I agree. I feel that is something that we all need to learn about. I'm sorry, could you tell me the reference again, Tom?
Oh, it's just D, at the top of page six. This is something that, that these new teachers, the?
There we go. So, I think that I absolutely agree. Our experts on the committee have noted that the indigenous tribes in Michigan practiced some democratic, early democratic kinds of forms of government, and that we really need to acknowledge that when we are talking about democracy, that it's not all just the ancient Greeks that did this, and that we need to notice in other cultures where we had practices of democracy and how they all came together here.
Okay. And then E, disposition, skills, and means, and I'm not gonna go through all of them, I only have a few more, Mr. Chairman. The disposition, skills, and means necessary to take informed action as part of the democratic process and in the school setting. So, I, you know, there's been criticism that, especially with the C three framework, that our government schools are now getting, getting kids who are still forming, you know, their views on politics and very susceptible to authority telling them what is and isn't true when it may not be correct, and then getting them to act, getting them to do sit-ins, do, you know, protests, do all these things. Is that what this is kind of talking about is, you know, as part of the democratic process in the school setting?
I think that it could be, it could be some of those things. It could be letters to school board members. It could be participating in school board meetings. It could be community meetings that they, that students might be encouraged to participate in or to write letters to the editor.
In those kind of settings, like how, you know, kids are very susceptible to authority figures, and if the teacher or if the, if the group is kind of going one way, it's hard to stand out and, and, you know, stand up for one, you know, one's views, and so you kind of end up moving, you know, kind of moving kids along in a different direction or the authority says, this is the way it is, and now we're gonna actually implement it into action, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna get into politics. You know, how do you, how do they make sure that doesn't happen, that a, a child's? I mean, again, these are seventh, eighth, ninth graders or more that really are, you know, don't have a real strong, you know, some do, but may, may not understand all the consequences of certain, you know, they may only see good things but not the, you know, not unseen things. How do you, how do, how would a, a teacher, how does that? I mean, that, that E kind of makes me wonder how they're gonna make sure that doesn't happen, you know, that we're not having teachers kind of do that.
Yeah. Well, it's taken as a whole, and so E is within other standards that really ask, that, or expect that teachers consider their own biases, and with other standards that are really prioritizing digging into the evidence, multiple perspectives, multiple viewpoints in order that we develop teachers that ideally are not promoting one viewpoint, whatever that may be, but are encouraging and helping their students to develop their own viewpoint based on evidence and multiple perspectives.
Let me just do one more, and then I'll let others chime in before I got maybe a couple of others. But on G, just in the same list, how issues of, you know, teachers are gonna be knowledgeable of how issues of power and privilege affect systems of democracy and can benefit and or exclude different groups. So, power and privilege, what would be an example or a couple of examples of what this is talking about, how issues of power and privilege affect systems of democracy? And with this, actually, I'll throw out, just, you know, I mean, this group has discussed, you know, the idea that there's, that, you know, Michigan kids need to know about white privilege and that, you know, some have privilege and some are oppressed and some are oppressors. Is that in any way being, is that kind of a part of this in any way? Could it be? It couldn't be?
Well, it, the idea behind the power and privilege phrases here is that these standards emphasize that across the whole scope of history, power and privilege changes across time and place and culture. And so, understanding where that power comes from or how different groups or people or entities gain power is really an important part of understanding our history, our economics, our geography. So, that's really what it's getting at. It's not, it's not using a lens of, of, you know, I'm trying to recall your words, Mr. McMillan.
White privilege.
Thank you. It's not using a, a particular lens of white privilege or systemic racism. It's not promoting one viewpoint at all. It's suggesting that we need to understand how power and privilege are enacted across history.
So, I mean, could this, I spent a weekend, last weekend, with a bunch of families, and, and one of them was from Romania and was under the oppressive hand of Ceausescu, and they had to renounce their privilege at one point because their parents might have been successful and before the killings occurred, which, you know, government is the mess, you know, I mean, they, they do a lot of that, bad governments, and so, you know, that, would that be talking about how, how this has been used incorrectly, that people are told that they have to renounce their quote-unquote privilege just because their parents might have been successful?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's an example.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder.
Just to draw a contrast from the last presentation, which was really hard to follow. I was just reading some of the, what the kids had to say. In conclusion, I love my specials because they help me find out who I am. And, you know, from a, from a parent's perspective, it's, it's one of those things where that's relatively benign, right? Because you, you're happy to see your child go to school and participate in specials and, and they find pathways like music education or theater, and it helps them identify their identity. But now we're talking about social studies, which is a completely different topic, and when we talk about standards related to that topic, I think it's important to realize what standards really are. They really are supposed to be there to support teachers in doing the work that they do to educate their students. And in any other industry, standards are there for the same purpose. You know, in nursing, we had a standard of care in, in various different areas of nursing. If you didn't follow those standards of care and there was a negative outcome, there's some accountability that's related to that. You can always go back and point to that standard of care and say, did you follow standard of care? I would argue that we're in a space now where standards in education are producing an outcome, right? And whether it's certified special teachers or it's the concept of social studies standards, when I listen to the presentation, I hear things like, you know, processes defined by social scientists that help develop citizenship. So, where are the boundaries within that, right? Because if, if a student uses music education to help themselves define who they are, a student can also use social studies standards and, and instruction within a social studies class to help them define things like their political identity. And Tom kind of touched on this a little bit, but my thought process is far more firm in, in this respect. We should not be developing political identities of students, and I think that the standards need to not provide that kind of shade. It needs to be really clear that that's not their responsibility. So, when we talk about events that students go to, political events should probably not be something that we're encouraging students to go to. I just got an email this week about, you know, someone commenting on, I want to make sure that whatever events you are going to, I'm not, you know, you're not getting perdiems for that, right? As a State Board of Education member, I'm not being reimbursed for political events or events that someone might not agree with that I go to. That's fair. That's reasonable. I really want to nod to that concept that we don't use taxpayer dollars to refund State Board of Education members to go to biased political events. We should also not be using taxpayer dollars to educate and instruct students in a biased and political manner. So, you know, as we circle back around to these standards in the future, I want to be sure that you're pointing out to me that there is no standard that's protecting teachers in doing so, because we want to support them, but we also want to make sure that those boundaries are honored. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Other board members? Other, Mr. Bullock?
So, my, in my novice intellect, I didn't get political avocation from the word citizenship or democracy in the use of social studies, which is a general dynamic of universal standard, and so, the invoking of politics has thrown me into a cluster of, of questions here. So, your presentation had nothing to do with politics. Am I clear? Or the advocating of a political characteristic or influence to the children who are being taught?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct.
So, then I want to say to my colleagues, again, I said this last morning, is that we must be thoughtful in not to invoke our political ideas at a table that is supposed to be non-political, because it's disrespectful in how we articulate these things. And trying to compare a cultural dynamic as Romania to the, a disadvantaged community such as black Americans in this country is also very, very, it's disheartening in how we try to convolute this message. We're talking about social studies, civics, history being taught in a school in a manner and a standard that university, everybody should understand how we got to a place, right? And so, I just want to reiterate, I want you to reiterate what it is you're trying to convey to the board.
Well, thank you for that opportunity. Yeah, it, these definitely are apolitical standards. They are not promoting any one viewpoint. They are not taking a stance in, in those ways. They, engaging students in informed action or, you know, getting involved in those activities is a way to form good citizens. I mean, we need the children of today to be active citizens tomorrow. We need them to engage in the political process at some point and figure out their way through that, but if they haven't ever been involved in the process, it's hard to get involved in the process later as an adult or see it as your job or responsibility as a citizen. So, it does encourage involvement. It does not encourage any political leaning or any viewpoint.
Because we live in a democracy which doesn't assign you to a political base.
Yeah.
The word doesn't mean that you're a Democrat. It's, it's.
No, our, our representative democracy would not continue to exist if our citizens are not involved.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Ms. McMahon, Ms. Snyder, back to you.
Just, just two things to reiterate. We can't ask students to participate in politics but then consider standards apolitical. That, so, in order to keep them apolitical, you have to set a boundary for yourself. And if you really want apolitical standards, then go to the lengths and put the effort into the standards that truly define that. We don't get to say two different things that are inconsistent and, and call something apolitical. We cannot encourage students to engage in political activity and then say, but these standards are apolitical. And, and back to, I'm sorry, I'm gonna finish. Back to Marshall's comments about, about what you said. I heard processes defined by social scientists helping to develop citizenship. That's beyond teaching students about the Constitution, helping them to understand the different amendments, the historical context of those amendments, the Declaration of Independence, the history prior to that, and then asking them to take that foundation of knowledge, grow into a political identity that a school does not cultivate and is not responsible to cultivate, and therefore end up participating in political world as an adult. Very different, very different concept here. We're, we're asking fifth grader, I'm sorry, middle school, which depends on the school in terms of how you would implement these standards, through 12th grade to follow these standards. And I think it's extremely important. If you want them to be apolitical, go to great lengths to make them apolitical. Hold standards high in terms of schools are not responsible for cultivating political identities.
Yeah, if I can just, I'm sorry.
Please, you know, please.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. First, I would like to point out that there are many ways to be involved in our democratic process without taking a political stance, and many of the aspects that they could be involved in that are not political events or, or ways, possibilities. So, as I mentioned, writing a letter to the editor, creating information for school council elections, participating in a school board meeting as an example, as examples. Also, just to keep in mind that these are teacher preparation standards for middle grades and high school teachers, not, not students, so just to keep that kind of clear. And you, and you raise a really good point about keeping them apolitical, and so, you know, I'll bring that to the committee as we consider stakeholder input, excuse me, statewide review input. We will consider that as well. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Dr. Robinson.
Just a quick question and a quick comment. First of all, I've, I've worked on standards in other, in another discipline, so I think you've done a really fantastic job here. This is a really nicely outlined framework.
It's a fantastic committee.
Yeah, clearly. So, the last time these were updated was 2009, and the world, you know, changes, right? So, how often are these standards updated? Is there a rotation? And, you know, this is kind of a work in progress. We're probably also baking in how that process is gonna be conducted over time. So, that's my question. And then my comment is that we often see people doing standards work like this, talk about knowledge of content and knowledge of pedagogy, but I just want to congratulate you on also including knowledge of students, which I think is really undergirding everything that we're talking about here. You can know your stuff and you can know how to package it, but if you don't know who you're teaching it to and you don't know where those students are coming from, and I think that's what Marshall is, is saying more elegantly than I did, then it doesn't really matter what the content or the pedagogy is if you don't know who your, your, your target audience is. So, how often are these updated? Should we be on a 20-year rotation?
If you'd like. We'd like to update our standards within 10 years, so we don't like them to go past 10 years. The reason you're seeing these is because we did modify our certification structure.
Right.
And, as you know.
Yeah, yep.
And so, that's why you're seeing these now, and so, we had to change our timelines to meet the new certification structure.
So, we'll get back into kind of once every 10 years or so?
We're hopeful of that, yes.
Yes, okay.
Dr. Pugh, thank you, Dr. Robinson.
Hate to come behind Dr. Robinson, but, and I think this goes to board member McMillan, but I'm mindful of what we went through when we were building out the social studies standards, and I'm also thoughtful that typically where the politics comes in is, is in the process of putting together these, the, the standards. So, I guess my question is making sure that there are safeguards in place. I'm looking at, I'm also always mindful of participation and how we're making sure that we're getting the well-rounded participation. We've seen just in Florida where there's the supposed influence on the AP standards Um, we've seen just in Florida where there's the supposed, um, influence on the AP standards for, for, um, black history, uh, teaching or education for advanced placement, um, of the college board. And we've seen, um, here in, in our state, again, when we were doing the so- social studies standards where we had a state legislature, legislator who was able to influence that process. And, uh, while it's Black History Month, I'm always thinking, you know, thoughtful that, that this period, and I've said this before, um, to me is reminiscent of what I read about the Reconstruction period and, and what, um, folks wouldn't great lengths to, to get to the Redemption Period, to, to take a steps backwards and how people are protective of power, um, and privileged and the, the lengths that, that, that folks would go to, to, to protect that. So, my thoughts are, you know, and questions are just the safeguards that are being put in place to make sure that that influence is not there on this process of putting, uh, this great work together. And then just making sure that, that the participation is well-rounded because people are always so stretched thin and especially certain populations that we really need to get input from. So, those are my questions.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Um, just two, two final notes with Ms. Lipton, and you're the benediction, and then we're pivoting. Okay.
Um, thank you for your presentation. And, um, in reading these, um, and, uh, thinking about it, um, I'm quite comfortable, um, that there are, uh, certainly the ability to create, to create standards, uh, within a social studies, than a social studies curriculum. Uh, as a former state representative, one of the things that I used to love to do is to go into classrooms and read to students. And, um, I'll never forget speaking to a teacher, uh, when I was a young state rep, not really knowing what to do. And they said, "You know what you should do, this for kindergartners? Why don't you bring in a selection of books and let the students vote on which book that they want to hear?" And so, my question to you is, it happened to have been a social studies teacher who recommended this. Um, and what had occurred to me is that she's the professional. I wasn't. And by, uh, listening to her, uh, she was really giving me guidance that you can teach a kindergartner the core aspect and the value of citizenship by the simple act of coming in as, as a guest, and they were very excited, and giving them the opportunity to vote on the book that they wanted to hear. And so, my question to you is, might that be, um, a way of teaching citizenship and democracy in a very apolitical, apolitical way? Even from a person who was a politician at the time?
Yeah.
Would you agree that that simple act was teaching citizenship and democracy in a way that was able to very strongly not bring politics into it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton.
I had indicated I wanted to come back.
We, uh-
Extremely important area.
It is, it is an extremely important area.
I've got a couple of really important questions.
Uh, we've gone an hour. Uh, we welcome your questions. Please submit them in writing, and we'd be happy to-
Are you serious?
To answer it. I am.
You're going to deny my responsibility to the people?
You filibustered at the beginning-
Filibustered?
You did. You, you basically spent 15 minutes of, and you usurped other people's opportunities to speak. Um, we're behind in the agenda, and we have another important topic backing it up. We welcome your questions. We look forward to answering those questions. We also look forward to putting this out for public comment and getting comment from people across the state.
Well, we get clarity now so that people understand what they're commenting on. So, that's our, one of our rules right now.
It is. There, there's no question about that. We look forward to-
You don't want us to do that.
We look, uh, actually, we heard more questions from you than from everyone else altogether. Um, we appreciate your time.
Authority.
We appreciate your, uh, your sharing. Uh, just a, just a note so that there is a complete clarity. Oftentimes, social studies teachers assign children, uh, assignments to, uh, write on a question of public import. Not to choose a particular side necessarily, not to say you must write in favor of or in opposition to, but tell us what you think about-
That's true.
A given public question. And, uh, that is helping young people learn about how to participate in a, in a public process, which is ultimately a political process, but it's not necessarily telling them what to think in that political process. We appreciate your presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is 11:17. The next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is a presentation on Michigan's top 10 strategic education plan goal three, improving the health, safety, and wellness of students. During this presentation, we will share updated metrics and share current work on this goal area. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. We welcome our presenters, Ms. Amy Alanis, interim director of the Office of Health and Nutrition Services, and Dr. Diane Golcinski, interim deputy superintendent in the Division of Finance and Operations. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you very much. It's great to be here with you. So, as Dr. Rice said, today we would like to give you an update on Goal Three, which is specific to improving the health, safety, and wellness of all learners. As you may remember, the metrics involve participation in breakfast, on-track attendance, being physically active, um, those reducing tobacco products and improving student mental health supports, as well as reducing those bullied on school property, those who feel sad or hopeless, or seriously consider, consider attempting suicide, um, the percent of children who were ever told by a doctor that they have asthma, have been tested for lead, as well as Michigan's national rank for overall child well-being. So, we will start today with that national rank for overall child well-being. You will see here that we did decrease slightly. However, we improved in 11 of the 16 subcategories, as did other states, which we believe contributed to the slight drop. It's important to note that these are lagging data. So, while there may be improvements happening, we will not see them until the data catch up to where we are today. Next, we have the student participation in school breakfast programs. These data are snapshot in-time data, so they are not cumulative over time. And it's important to remember that during the latter half of 2020, all the way through 2022, all children were eating for free at school. So, that did drastically affect those numbers. Next, we have the percent of children considered chronically abs- absent. We believe that we are poised to be better on this metric for 22, 23 school year because of the evolving changes where children are learning as they were, it, which are so drastically different than they were during the two years that are on the slide. We move on to the percent of students who are physically active for a total of at least 60 minutes per day on five or more of the last seven days, as well as the percent of students who use tobacco products. Now, you'll notice that this slide specifically says new data, but it's demonstrating data from 2020 to 2021, the school year 2020 to 2021. The big issue here is these are the most recent data released by CDC. MDE received these data in November of '22. So, these are the most recent data that we have from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. The same goes for the students who have been bullied on school property for the past 12 months. It is possible that this particular data point may have decreased because of the reduced time students actually were spending on school property during 2020 to 2021.
Let's, let's, let's hold, let's hold for questions until the very end, please.
We move on next to the percent of students who felt sad or hopeless, or who seriously considered attempting suicide. Again, 2020 to 2021 data. And these data, um, directly reflect the anecdotal reports that we were hearing during the, uh, pandemic of the increase in mental health crises and attempts at suicide. We move on then to data points that are from our partnering agencies. Um, this one in particular is the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. What we do not know about these data points is if they are a real trend or if it's a reporting issue due to the pandemic. Again, our data are all directly reflected by the pandemic at this time. The same goes for the percent of children tested for lead and those who had high lead levels. While we, um, report these data to you, it's important to remember that we, as an MDE team, do not actually own them. We are reporting from our partners. This particular data point is very interesting because it is, it represents only a small segment of the work that we do to assure that children have access to mental health and support services at school. You may recall that there are a number of different funding opportunities in the FY23 budget. There's 31A, which is at-risk funding. There's 31AA, which is per pupil funding, which could include, um, providing direct services. There is Section 31N, which we have had since FY19. Then there was Section 31O, which had more funding directly to districts for mental health providers. Out of all of those different methods in which we can get support and services to our kids, only one small piece of that actually has a way for us to measure or count the number of kids who are receiving services. So, 31N subsection six, not even subsection five, but subsection six, we are using, uh, BH Works as a technology platform, which we are able then to run reports to see how many kids are able to be served under that particular funding stream. But it is not representative of all of the work that's happening in, in this area. It is only representative of the one way that we have of trying to measure this particular metric so that we can report it to you. Moving now from the metrics to different ways in which we have worked to improve all of Goal Three. We will outline for you the, um, work that we're doing to develop a comprehensive children's mental health system, our support for a variety of, um, crisis support resources that are available to students and adults as well, funding increases in the state aid budget that have focused specifically on those behavioral health services, as well as two particular federal grants that we have received to support this work. As, and then finally, we will, um, talk about some efforts related to chronic absenteeism and social emotional learning. So, we'll start with the core features of a comprehensive school mental health system. You will see that there are eight components that are identified by the National Center for School Mental Health as to what makes up a comprehensive school mental health system. What we are working on for the state of Michigan is really trying to determine if all eight of these components are the way that Michigan educators and mental health professionals view this comprehensive school mental health system. We see an incredible partnership between parents, communities, and schools in supporting kids who are at school. And so, we are working right now with a couple of different groups to try to develop this system for the state of Michigan, now that we have some long-term sustainable funding available to our schools. For the moment, because we don't have what it looks like exactly for the state of Michigan, we will use these eight components, and we'll talk through how they relate to a number of different initiatives that we are working on here in the department and with partners. The partners that we are working with are listed on the screen. This is a sampling of the partners. This is not work that we can do alone, nor should we. This is work that takes everyone statewide in order to support our kids. So, we're very, very pleased to have a number of people at the table with us willing and wanting to make this a better state in which our kids are educated. Couple of those partners have some 24/7 crisis support resources that we also promote for our students. Many of you know about the OK to Say tip line. Um, that information is there on the screen. We also have the Crisis Text Lines 741741. It's a texting service that was available during the pandemic, and we also promote that to our districts so that they can promote that to parents and students alike. And then you may have heard about the National Suicide Crisis Lifeline, 988. Um, that particular lifeline is now required to be on Michigan student ID cards. And so, those things are all available. That's how we are getting this information to our students so that they have access to resources as needed, um, to get the help that they need. Just a friendly reminder that in fiscal year 18, we had no money coming from the state budget to support this work. Um, this really started in fiscal year 19 with what, at the time, we thought was a windfall and really, um, was only roughly $20 per student, and that was in Section 31N. Section 31N has continued. It has multiple components to it. One is a Child and Adolescent Health Center component with a mental health focus. Another is direct services to schools, and then another is that technology component that we, that I've already discussed. Since that time, we have continued, we have been able to continue to see an expansion of the 31N dollars, and in FY22, we saw more money going into this work. So, it has been wonderful and incredibly appreciated. Our biggest challenge has been that there are not enough professionals to hire with the funding that's available. So, there's a lot more open positions than what we actually have the ability to fill. And so, we are seeing large gaps in community mental health and other services as we are drawing providers into the schools where there's funding at the moment, and then we're seeing those providers move from school to school. So, it is, um, not settled out, but we are desperately working toward that. So, Section 31N is the longest-going, consistent, um, funding source that we've had, and these are three years of consecutive data of the hiring work that we have been doing with that particular, um, set of funding. The funding goes directly to ISDs, and then ISDs must disseminate that out to local districts. So, you can see our number of school buildings served has gone up, our number of local districts served has gone up, as well as our FTEs, um, in the various helping professions. More importantly, so have our services. The services that we have been able to offer to the students in support of them at school has been able to significantly increase as we've been able to get the providers, as we've been able to expand to the number of schools and districts, and as we've been able to, um, have additional referrals to providers outside of school. The technology piece, remember that comprehensive mental health system, one of those is connecting the dots, the data that's available, the, the systems that are in place to support the kids. What we are doing is using Section 31N9 funding, which is technology funding, to support a program called BH Works, where all funded providers have access to this. They can do referrals and screenings and take their care notes. They can communicate with parents. Um, they can get community provider referrals involved all through one system. So, they no longer would have to log into multiple different systems in order to do that work. Makes things more efficient so that they can actually spend more time servicing kids. So, what we are trying to do in bringing together this comprehensive behavioral health system is really simplifying the process for those providers who are delivering those services. We would like to see the provider spending more time with children than worrying about the paperwork that's required for the licensure of their particular, um, field. We would like to see additional standardization for everyone who uses BH Works so that we can continue to pull the data and be able to report to you the successes of this work. We would, of course, like to see improved student mental health outcomes. That is, our ultimate goal is really supporting our kids in school. And then also improving confidential communication with their families, with other schools- And then also improving confidential communication with their families, with other school staff as appropriate, and with other providers as appropriate. Then we have Section 31O, which was $240 million, starting in 2021. And that was specific for hiring school psychologists, social workers, counselors, and nurses. Funds were intended to be distributed on a decreasing amount over the course of each year, over three years. So 100% in the first year, 66% in the second, and 33% in the third and final year. This was really a jumpstart to getting additional professionals hired and into local districts to support kids. So you will see that in the 2122 school year, the numbers of professionals that were able to be hired using Section 31O funds. Now, these are one-time funds. They do go away after fiscal year 24. So what we would like to see in building that system is that providers are able to draw down additional Medicaid match or funding through 31AA in order to support these providers so that they can stay within the school system on an ongoing basis.
So we just wanted to highlight a few of the programs and initiatives that Dr. Golzinski mentioned. So we're going to start with the Advancing Wellness and Resiliency in Education, which is also known as the Project Aware grant. This comes out of the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. We received $1.8 million in October of 2020. This is a renewable grant for up to five years for a total of $9 million. This is the second time we have received a Project Aware grant. In the first round, we worked with Oakland Schools as well as Kent ISD and Jackson ISD. One of the outcomes of that grant was, as we were using it for a model for the state, they were concerned that, okay, these are locations that have resources in their backyards. What do we do in the rural districts where we don't have access to the resources? And how can we use that as a model for the state? So this year, we decided to go with three rural districts, Copper Country, Delta Schoolcraft, and Van Buren. So, next slide, please. So we have some goals. As Dr. Golzinski spoke to all of the eight components of a comprehensive children's mental health system, this grant is basically putting those features into practice. So it's improving the service coordination and increasing awareness of mental health concerns, providing mental health awareness training to the adults who interact with the youth, increased youth access to mental health services. And then it also uses that BH Works technology platform that Dr. Golzinski discussed, and it's also using evidence-based screeners, assessments, and trainings. Next slide, please. So for the first couple of years, first two years for Project Aware accomplishments, we're currently strengthening the identification and awareness of mental health concerns. We have 163 mental health workforce individuals trained. Remember, these are in the small rural districts. We have 1,488 non-mental health workforce individuals trained. Those non-mental health staff could be teachers, administrators, parents, transportation, food staff, community members. So we have also had 610 student referrals for services, and we've established a multidisciplinary teams in each location to collaborate around connecting students to services in schools and communities. Some of those examples of community teams include entities like child welfare, juvenile justice, parents, the youth themselves, higher education, law enforcement, and public health departments. So we're excited to see the continued success of that grant program. The next thing we'd like to discuss that's very exciting is the Michigan Earn, Learn, and Serve in Schools. So this will be an overview of the just over $4.5 million awarded to MDE. And this is a demonstration grant that we just received this January. The whole purpose is to expand the workforce for providers. As Dr. Golzinski discussed, we have the funding sources of 31AA, 31N, 31O, and we have the funding to provide the providers, but we don't have the people to fill those roles. So all of those positions, including the school counselors, school social workers, psychologists, we need a way to increase the people coming through that profession. So this will be a five-year program funded by the United States Department of Education and the Office of Elementary and Secondary Education. And we have a statewide approach that's very unique. Just so you know, only three of the 67 awards are state agencies, and our application was among the highest scoring. We have the opportunity to continue statewide coordination. We're going to be convening and working with the LEAs to project job demand, analyze supply, and build talent pipelines with training partners. So our focus is on the interns. We are going to be placing 165 counselor, social worker, and psychologist interns over the next five years in high-need LEAs in partnerships with your institutions of higher education. One school-year obligation will be required after the internship to work in the high-need LEAs, and at least 895 of the interns, so over half, will be from diverse backgrounds. Our partners in school psychology, Grand Valley State University, will be partnering with Cedar Springs Public Schools. Michigan State University will be partnering with Jackson County Intermediate School District. For school counseling, CMU Central Michigan will be partnering with Gracia Isabella, RISA. And under school social work, both the University of Michigan and Wayne State University will be partnering with Wayne RISA. Some of the key activities is going to be to develop and implement an intern outreach and stipend process for the interns, and they will receive a $20,000 stipend for their work. We'll be supporting the interns, completing the fieldwork, and fulfilling the service obligation. And then we're also going to support the supervisors of the interns at their placements by providing them with a $2,000 payment and also providing them with the required implicit bias training at no cost to them for supervising an intern. The steering committee will meet for the first time next week, so we're very excited to get this moving. One topic that we are continuously working on is reducing chronic absenteeism. We do have a small team formed here at the department to look into this. It's comprised of different MDE members representing different offices, and the IMTSS Technical Assistance Center is also a part of that. They have attended trainings by the Student Engagement and Attendance Council, and they're currently working internally as they've developed a proposal on ways to increase resources, supports, partners, and capacity to scale the attendance best practices. So we have collaborations with MDE with the Partnership District Liaisons, the Family Engagement Leadership Team, and Early Warning Signs Team. The IMTSS Technical Assistance Center is also providing trainings that are available to all schools and districts within the state. That comes from Jessica Sprick with the Safe and Civil Schools on Reducing Chronic Absenteeism. We are also working directly with Attendance Works, who has provided Michigan with resources and supports, both at some of the local levels as well as at the state level. And we're constantly learning from and with Kent ISD and the Kent Student Services Network, as well as Jackson Whole Child Collaborative, to increase school engagement and help families overcome the barriers to promote equity. Another initiative coming from our area is IMPACT@School. IMPACT stands for Interrupting Prolonged Sitting With Activity. So this is the University of Michigan's Exercise and Sports Science Initiative, led by Dr. Rebecca Hansen. It's also a program in partnership with the Michigan State Board of Education and Superintendent, the Michigan School Health Coordinators Association, and the Society of Health and Physical Educators, also known as SHAPE. So it is an evidence-informed, classroom-based, physical activity program that enables teachers to deliver 20 minutes of health-enhancing physical activity in the classroom every day. So the connection is that it supports the classroom management, curricular integration, and student motivation. It also supports social-emotional learning through helping children regulate their emotions and feelings, which provides them to be ready to learn academically. And then it also increases minutes that kids are physically active during the school day, as unfortunately, kids do not always have access to physical education, especially on a daily basis. Also previously discussed at the board table is the Social and Emotional Learning and Children's Mental Health Network. We're very excited about this network. The SEL and Children's Mental Health Network members consist of state, regional, and local associations and districts representing the 10 Michigan Association of School Administrator regions. Together, they work to strengthen SEL and children's mental health efforts across the state through initiatives and resources. One of them was the campaign that was launched at the beginning of the convening of the network that was the Children Matter, You Matter, Learn SEL. Over 9,400 educators have taken the introduction to social-emotional learning course. So we're very excited that that is statewide reaching. The SEL and Children's Mental Health Network members showcase work being done around the state that supports students' social-emotional learning and mental health to promote the health, safety, and wellness for all learners. This is part of the comprehensive system designed to support kids to promote their health, safety, and wellness.
What questions do you have?
Thank you very much, Dr. Golzinski. Ms. Allen is. I would like to recognize Mike Lehthead, our Project Aware manager. Good to see you. Thank you so much for being here, board members. Ms. Lifted.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that presentation. I really appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure I understood some of the information that you provided. So on Slide 21, where you talk about since 2122, MDE has been able to use a million from 31N9A, the MD Logix. So basically, it sounds to me like the infrastructure has been set up so it is available to all intermediate school districts. My first question is, do we know how many of our, I think it's 53 IS? 56 ISDs, okay, I always forget, have actually partaken of that? And then a second question is, if an ISD partakes of that, does that then mean that it's automatically available to all of the local school districts within the ISD that has accepted that infrastructure?
Okay. Just making sure. You know that?
I can speak to the part about how many of the ISDs.
It's two-thirds, right?
That's right.
About 30 are live. Obviously, in different stages, right? It's like 38, but we didn't know if they were.
And do we have the capacity, we meaning, I'm sorry, MDE, have the capacity for all 56 if they so choose?
Correct. Through this particular line item, yep, that we're able to use that for. What they do is they actually individualize the connection from the software to the ISD so that it connects with whatever system the ISD is already using. So the ISD doesn't have to change. And then those funded providers through that ISD all then have access to the system. Now, is that all districts? No, because not all districts are getting 31N funding. So there's the difference. All ISDs are getting 31N funding, but not all districts.
Okay. Yes, thank you for that clarification. Okay, then on Slide 24, where you talk about the hiring impact of Section 31O, I just want to make sure that I understand the 602.5 total of the FTEs hired in 2122. Is that for the whole state?
Yeah.
I don't want to, that seems small.
Let's be clear, it's the increase.
Increase, okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Associated with that funding source.
Exactly.
Associated with that particular funding source. So it is an imperfect number, but it gives you a sense of the increase in helping professionals, in guidance counselors, nurses, school social workers, school psychologists.
Do we have any sense of like a percentage of where we want to be, of where we want to go? Like, I'm just, like, an absolute value is definitely helpful.
Sure.
But I'm just wondering if it would also be helpful if we at the board table sort of have an idea, like, well, we want it, the goal is maybe to increase by 1%, or I don't know what that number is, but do you guys have a sense?
A number of other states do is they use ratios.
Okay.
And we get those from the national organizations. So the National Association of School Psychologists, for example, recommends one school psychologist for every 250 students, I believe is what it is.
Is that right?
Did I get that right? Okay, thank you. And so if we were to actually use ratios, then we would get an idea of how many we would need at the state level based on the number of students that we have. It's still imperfect because you don't have exactly 250 students at every school, right? But you can get there. You can get to a place with ratios. We do not currently have a way of actually knowing the full plethora of professionals that are hired in our school districts because of this large variety of funding streams that are available and not reporting those particular professionals.
Okay, okay.
So the question is a really great question. It requires unpacking, and it requires unpacking by helping professionals. So for example, we talked about the arts. To talk about an elementary art teacher, an elementary music teacher, and to lump them together has some measure of utility, but not great utility, particularly when you're especially interested in music or art, or for that matter, PE. So we'd like to unpack this for you, give you the national ratios, which we have, and share with you-ish where we are in Michigan.
So that might be coming in a further?
It would be something that we could unpack over a period of time. It requires really pulling from different data sources, including the rep, to get a handle on not only what we have, which is not perfect, but which is relatively good compared to the normative, the descriptive, where we are, the normative, where we ought to be. And again, it would have to be based on some external sense of what solid ratios are. So there are student-to-guidance counselor ratios, there are student-to-nurse ratios, student-to-school psych ratios you referenced. And we could do that. That's a project. We're happy to do it. The other thing that we can do is to be informed by school finance research collaborative work, which also used ratios to build up its recommendations. Any other questions?
Thank, oh, just, I'm sorry. Just one last question on Slide 30. I just want to make sure I understand. So the placing of the counselor, social worker, and psychologist interns. Am I correct in assuming, and I could be totally wrong, but when I read that, my thought was that these are people that have maybe their bachelor's degree, and then maybe their first job placement as an intern might be this, as opposed to just grabbing people who don't have? I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what does one need to do prerequisite-wise to be considered to be one of these interns?
Yes. So the internship is often unpaid, and that is a big barrier for students even going into the field. And so the idea is that if we could provide a paid internship, we may draw others into the profession, but we will definitely help those who are looking at completing their degree in that profession for completing the internship so that they can then become licensed.
And am I to understand that in order to complete that degree, there is an internship component built in? Okay.
Exactly right.
So this is the paid portion. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lifted, and Mr. Bullock.
Well, thank you. I enjoyed your presentation, but this is strictly curiosity, but then as you went on, it developed into a bigger thing in my head. So the Slide 9 on Page 5 talks about bullies on school property. I'm curious to know where that data comes from, and does it include cyber social media bullying?
Sure. Sure. Great question. So this particular question comes from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is administered by the CDC. CDC pulls a sample of Michigan schools and students so that it represents the entirety of the state. This particular question does not represent cyber or other bullying. It is only bullying that happens on school property. Is that accurate? Correct.
Just the physical nature of bullying or anything. So then that led me to the counselor, social worker, psychologist. As we put them on, we put them in the gates of students at school. How are we doing that? Because if I send a therapist to the classroom to get the student, everyone sees I'm going to see the therapist. There's a stigma with that. And so that creates teasing and bullying at a different level. And we go through the airdrop, social media, phoning, bullying, or teasing, name-calling, labeling. And I just was curious. This is not a, this is just curiosity questions.
It's a great question. And so if you, if we go back to those eight core features from a comprehensive system for children, the system of support, you didn't dive into that one exactly, but really, there should be this, this I can do in social studies, mathematics, the critical aspect of universal standards for everyone. So it's establishing those universal standards, and you're teaching your kids on how they interact with each other appropriately, things about how to actually keep, gain, maintain healthy friendships, right? And so then, as they're working through those pieces, and we're talking as you're going on up through, that they're learning better methods of showing each other or having even friendships rather than personal attacks.
And schools are very creative when they need to deal with a student on a situation. They are very thoughtful of how to not call a student out or have them save face and things of that nature and how they deal with situations.
We hope that. Because I've seen it, and actually, I've seen it done better or more creative in the schools to have a partnership with clinics in the school.
Yes.
Like, you know, the Henry Ford Health Clinic, or just naming. So they utilize, but usually there's a call to the office, like, you know, blah blah, and then they get picked up in the office versus at the classroom. Things, I just, and so this was just going through my head once I saw the bullying question, went to the next question, because then that can cause the absenteeism because I'm being jeered.
And just so you are aware, the Michigan definition of bullying does now include cyberbullying as a form of bullying. So that is covered.
And the reason why I brought up it as universal is it's also normalizing and even advocating for some additional support, right? So that it's not seen as, oh, you're so different and it's all that.
It's okay to not be okay.
Yes.
That was good. Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Thank you, Mr. Lehthead. Who's next? Board members? Mr. McMillan?
With the mental health funding coming from the state, is it possible, or is there a restriction on it, that, is it possible that kids could be getting counseling from social worker, counselor, psychiatrist, psychologist, and the parents not know?
No.
It's not possible.
No, there has to be parental consent.
Yeah, if they're directly doing social work or counseling services, there is a consent piece attached to that.
Okay, good.
Now, there's a continuum of services. I mean, if a counselor were to come into a kindergarten class and do like a, but those wouldn't be direct student services. So these are for direct student services. So yes, there's a parent consent.
And that would fall under the Slide 13, number of students who receive school mental health and support services. That would be that number?
That would be that number only for those providers funded with that particular funding stream, because that's the only one we can measure that right now. We know more students are receiving services. We just don't have those numbers.
And so these, and then on Slides 8, 9, and 10, the YRBS, that's a CDC, I thought it might be connected to MiFi questionnaire, but that's
Those are two completely different surveys.
That's a CDC. And they do some kind of a statistical sampling of students. Do the parents, I mean, I, you know, like, percent of students who are seriously considered attempting suicide, you know, I know, now maybe it's anecdotal, I haven't studied it, but I know that there are instances where kids, when you introduce this idea, then all of a sudden, they decide that they may be suicidal. So I would think, does the CDC, this, is their parent, is it, do the parents know that the kids, is there any kind of opt-out, or no, I don't want your CDC asking my kids this question? Do you have any idea how that's asked or how that's done?
That's a local district's decision of how they do that, but students always have the ability to opt-out.
Yeah, and the CDC is doing it, though, locally?
The CDC created the survey.
Oh, okay, they created the survey and then this, the individual, so it's not necessarily scientific, it's not statistically sampled, it's just?
It is statistically sampled.
The kids can opt-out. So they can self-select, so it's really not?
There's an oversampling to account for that.
Yeah, but maybe the ones opting out, or, you know, are the ones that, okay, I mean, and they're self-reporting, kids are?
It's all self-reported.
Yeah. Good, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Dr. Pugh, Ms. Snyder?
And I'm on Page 11, or Slide 11, Page 6. And is this BRFS data, or is this the youth, this is the youth?
This is BRFS data.
Okay. So then this is a parent that's responding by proxy for the child, or is this the child responding to the, ever told by a doctor that they had asthma?
This comes from the Department of Health and Human Services. I believe it's a combination that doctors can be reported, physicians can be reporting the data as well, but it should be coming from the parent, not the student.
Right. Yeah, this data, I'm pretty sure, comes from the parent
Yes.
answering on behalf of the child.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, but that wasn't really my question. First of all, I cannot say enough about this being one of our goals and how we continue to add data and learn about how this data is available and not available. And when it comes to health data, you know, we have tons of issues with trying to report out, and it definitely is not the same as reporting academic data. But this should be pretty recent because it is the BRFS. It's not actual reports from medical reports. So just a few questions that I have. With the asthma data, it is interesting to see the dip. And immediately, I think about environmental exposures, because environmental exposures are hugely related to triggers and some actually causing asthma. So would really like to see how maybe children being outside of the school building, maybe even wearing masks, could have influenced those numbers, but it is good to see. It is really good to see. And then when I look at, when I look at the lead data, again, our numbers for testing have dropped when you go from 2015, 2016. However, I think when you brought this data before, I don't know that we had the testing, I don't know if we had the number tested, but it's good to see that the last two comparative years, time spans, we've maintained the testing, and we've seen the lead numbers, the children who have elevated numbers go down. So that's definitely good to see. When we talk about the chronic absentee work, absenteeism work, I'm just wondering if we're making sure that this health data is being considered and that we make sure that we also have those medical or public health folks that are at the table. We know, I say on repeat, that asthma is leading cause, or has been, I haven't seen anything change, leading cause of absenteeism. And now that we have some environmental shifts that could be going on, it would be interesting to see what that looks like. I definitely commend you all on the grants that you've written and gotten the highest scores. I know that it's not easy to do the work and also be making sure that you have resources to fund the work. So you all, definitely commend you on that. When I look at the MyELSIS approach, and I don't know if this fits here, but what came to mind for me are the resource officers that are being dispatched to schools, which, again, on a day like today, you know, that probably does provide some sense of security for parents, but I also have to tell you, there are parents that are very fearful of having officers being dispatched to their schools. And making sure, I don't know, again, if this is where this would take place, but, you know, really assessing the match, if there's any way, because I think I also heard you saying that you're working with law enforcement that's one of the partners somewhere, maybe not here. But, you know, matching, that's one thing I'm thinking of, but also making sure that there's a sound referral process. So if there are interns or any other professionals that are in the building, that they're appropriately, that they are being the ones who are called on when appropriate, and that if those resource officers are in those buildings, they know who to send children to, when, in what instances to send them. And then also training, training opportunities. So I think that that covers all of my questions and thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Snyder?
I'll actually forego, I think it would be redundant, so.
Okay, very good. Any other, Ms. Tiller?
I just wanted to make a quick comment about the fact that these types of surveys that the students are getting are very important. A lot of times, they cannot effectively express themselves. They haven't processed some of those thoughts. And some of those students, at times, cry out for help and don't know. And you can see it in their behavior, but they may not be able to articulate it. They are not necessarily self-aware yet. There's a combination of things that those students are feeling and going through. And those surveys help the schools, the teachers, the administration, as well as other organizations that are providing services, know what issues are going on within that school that they need to address. So it's very important that we have this data and that schools have this data. Thank you.
Thank you. Other board members? Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. Again, I offer my congratulations to you on all of the grants that you are writing and receiving. Back to this Michigan Earn, Learn, and Serve in Schools, more of a process question, and I've talked to ironically over the last couple of weeks, a couple of individuals, administrators, not only from Michigan, but from across the country. And the main thing they say is, we need more personnel, especially behavioral specialists, counselors. So the partnership schools that we have in Michigan, my, and here's my question, my assumption would be that might be a place where an intern under this program could be placed, you know, and still receive support from their university as they're finishing up their degree, et cetera. So am I, I'm, so would a local district follow through with the department on that, or is it coming to ISDs, or is it coming to higher ed?
That will come as we continue to build this out. So the steering committee meets next week for the first time. We know who the partners are, and then how those local districts are chosen through those partners, like Wayne RISA is a partner. How those local districts are chosen is part of what that steering committee will develop.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Any other questions from board members? Questions or comments on once, twice, thrice? We appreciate our two presenters and our bonus presenter as well. Thank you so much, Dr. Golzinski, Ms. Alleniz, Mr. Lehthead. It is, board members, it is 12:07. We are going to adjourn for lunch. We will come back at 1 o'clock.